Dear Lord, I didn't aspire to the wisdom of the street of failing test because of the self set goals of the kind of new part. Amen.
To the Republic which stands for a nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a roll call?
Yes, sir.
I.
I. Thomas Casser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey and defend.
Support, obey and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And on this charge my duties.
And on this charge my duties.
Within the Fall property department.
Within the Fall property department.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Tell you my reason why I do it.
Do you have a roll call please? Ms. Stravsky here. Ms. Peterson here.
Here.
Ms. Solly. Here. Ms. Rafter. Here. Ms. Rafter. Here.
Because you're allowed to fix it.
Oh, no.
You can fix it.
For participation.
Not wanting to fix it.
All right.
Uh, the three, eighty eight count three minutes. I made a motion.
Sit with the teacher.
Roll call please.
Sit with nobody.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Harris, minutes of good approval. Um, at our committee meeting, we had two companies present to us regarding, um, the handling of back sewer and trash taxes. At this time, I would like Mr. Pescini to address and then Mr. Sanarelli.
Yeah, we have to review, uh, I was given the pass by council a month ago to bring in, uh, a couple of different companies to collect the link of sewer and trash. This time, after reviewing both proposals, being familiar with both companies, I recommend, uh, municipal recovery services, like patients.
Mr. Sanarelli.
If that's the way the council would like to, uh, proceed and, uh, go with, uh, Mr. Pescini's recommendation, then it would be in order for the council to entertain a motion to authorize and borrow an interim agreement, municipal resource recovery services, collect and borrow the link of sewer and trash fees, authorize council president and other borough officials to execute the necessary documents and do all things necessary to effect the current act. That would be the motion that will be made.
Do I have a motion to accept Mr. Pescini's recommendation?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Mr. McWhagan.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Harris, um, we will retain municipal resource recovery services.
And according to this, they're starting July.
I talked to Mr. Pierce and he said that we have approved it.
Sooner the better.
Said that if, if we approve it, they can start it.
Okay. I understand you're familiar because you weren't here last week.
I've, I've worked. We've, uh, I've worked with Mr. Pierce and other, uh, municipalities. I know he does it in other towns and essentially the same system.
He offers other tax services to, uh, is what I remember from the presentation.
Yes, yes.
That, that would be something I think different than the issue of this, this only is right to leave it.
Well, we just discussed in the committee meeting about the possibility that tax had their troubles, so he.
Right. Understood.
Do I have a motion to approve the bill list?
Motion.
For the second. Do I have a roll call please?
Um, I just have one question. Jones, that's the department labor second quarter, eighty, hundred dollars, so plus the other, we're like down fifteen thousand there.
Unbudgeted actual? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. I can, once you go further, I may move that around.
I, I don't know whether I need to shout.
Okay. Motion on the board, we have a roll call.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Motion Harris. Um, it's come to my attention that the library board has recommended, um, long board member, longstanding board member Charlotte Cook to fulfill a position, um, that became vacant when one of the library aides retired. Um, I would like a motion to accept Charlotte Cook as an employee of the library, um, and then.
Who retired?
I'm not sure that the person's been, they just told me that somebody was stepping down and that Charlotte was one becoming an additional wage, um, to take the position. Do you have any plans of the person who was appointed?
You know, I had it, I didn't write it down. They sent in a form to tell us that, you know, it's not long to be on the list and we need to care about it, but I don't, I don't handle it. We need to do the board first. The board.
Yes, Russell Cook is a member of the library board, she can't be an employee of the service.
Okay, so, okay, so before we vote on Ms. Cook as an employee, I would like to put, um, I called around because the position needs to be filled and Ms. Cook needs to be paid. She can't be paid until we as council accept her as an employee. So I called Patricia Casey, she's a schoolteacher, she works for the Head Starts Program, she's a resident of the borough for a long time. Um, she's been fine enough to take the position of sitting on the board of the library. Um, so I'd like to make a motion of appointing Patricia Casey as the board member taking Charlotte Cook's place.
It would be to fill the unexpired term that Mr. Peterson is serving in now. Fill Ms. Cook's unexpired term.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a roll call please?
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. McWhagan.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Harris, um, Patricia Casey for the library board, but at this time, I'd like to reopen the motion for Charlotte Cook, um, to become a library aide at the library.
Was she here years ago?
She was here years. Years and years and years ago, yeah.
Years ago? The library?
Yes.
Most, not too many people.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call please?
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Mr. McWhagan.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Motion Harris, well, I was looking into the library board, there is a position, a seventh position on the board that has never been filled. Um, not sure why it was never filled, but, um.
From what I understand, it's a lack of interest.
Okay, I found a young mom who has three children, one in first grade, one in kindergarten, and one who's soon to go into pre-K. Her name is Erica Van Orpen and she lives on Ashland Avenue, right up the street from the library. She uses the library a lot, um, so I'd like to appoint her to that position on the board that hasn't been filled. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a roll call?
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Mr. McWhagan.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Motion Harris, um, I know what Erica knew that she's not on the board anymore. So moving on, um, the status of the economic revitalization commission that we established, um, last month we appointed one businessman from the borough and this month I would like to appoint Mr. Joseph Serena. He's a business member of the community, um, and he has agreed to a two-year term sitting on the revitalization commission, giving us ideas on how we can revitalize our economic growth in the borough. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a roll call please?
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. McWhagan.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
And then, um, that leaves a, uh.
Roll call.
A three, a three-year term for a resident. Um, I would like to recommend Art Nanos who's a union person, um, as far as working in economic revitalization, that could be a great asset. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Art Nanos to, as a resident member, um, for a three-year term. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
No.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Can you move to the rec board, Ms. Peterson?
Um, I'm moved to appoint Brian Schmidt to the rec board to fill the seat that became vacant this March January 1st.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Mr. McWhagan.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Is that the old stage, Christine?
Yes.
Your full board ample.
Great, um, the mayor has vetoed the anti-blite ordinance, um, and we are asking to reconsider, reconsideration of the ordinance, um.
I would like to ask the mayor to read the letter for the reasons for the veto to the public.
The problem.
To know what's going on.
Start with, uh, any, uh, go with the shade tree commission.
Anti-blite.
Anti-blite, alright. Your council president members, I'm writing this letter to veto the name of light reclamation and revitalization ordinance. As I stated previously, this is a good ordinance that is needed because of the many deteriorated properties located in Fall property. This is quality of life issue for our residents. Ordinance are being handed out at council meeting and sent to a public hearing with no prior discussion among council members. Proper procedure not being followed and not be signing this ordinance. I would like this ordinance to be sent back to the ordinance committee, proper procedure followed, and only then will I reconsider signing this ordinance. And the other one, your council president members, I'm writing this letter to veto the renaming of the shade tree commission and expansion of its responsibility. The past laws commissions have been established with residents appointed, no prior discussion at a committee meeting prior to the appointment. According to the Pennsylvania Borough Association, all members are to be discussed at a public meeting before voted on. Thus again, proper procedure is not being followed. As stated, these are good ordinance, but they are, it's a procedure to be followed. I would like this ordinance to be sent back to the ordinance committee, proper procedure followed, and only then will I reconsider signing this ordinance.
I, I have a question regarding not being discussed. The light ordinance was given to us on March thirteenth and we talked about it at that meeting, we talked about it at the next meeting, and then we had a public hearing, and when I did the public hearing, nobody, including council, had any questions. Like no one discussed.
How many people here, I mean, I know you were, you were passing the anti-blite, but knew what it was about.
It's on the website, it's on.
But that's not.
It doesn't matter.
I understand that.
It should, no, it, it should be read to whoever's here and discussed at a public meeting, not in the website.
Committee meetings are public meetings.
People know.
We should have a committee meeting.
We did discuss it.
The committee meeting is a public meeting.
We did, we did discuss what the anti-blite was.
Why didn't you have an ordinance committee?
Because Jason actually had a question about it.
That you had.
Okay, we talked about it.
Why do we have committee meetings then? I don't understand, I would like you to explain to, to me, especially being the head of the ordinance committee, as well as the public, what procedure was not followed properly?
When we were.
What procedure was not followed properly?
Well, we didn't have.
You didn't have an ordinance committee meeting.
We didn't have an ordinance committee.
That's what's following. It's not necessary. It's not necessary.
Yes, it is.
There is nothing illegal being done at all, and I'm sure Ray can verify that. I know, I'm probably the only person up here that actually has a degree from college in politics. I can guarantee you since January third, I have done everything legal. Everything, and most municipalities and townships and boroughs around here, they bring up the ideas at the committee meetings and vote on them in the following week. I've been giving you guys five weeks and saying, let's not vote on this till the following month. Not once since January has anybody, and you have my contact information, cell phone, email, everything, nobody has gotten back to me with any feedback, good, bad, indifferent. There is no reason to have a secret little meeting, destroy people's egos to know what's going on five minutes before a committee meeting. That's ridiculous. It's a ridiculous argument. Ridiculous argument. And not having the public know. No, I know what I'm doing. College degree.
Why do we have an ordinance committee that you had? For what reason? Why don't we do away with it?
When somebody contacted me and said, hey, like you did last month, and said, hey, let's meet about something before committee meeting, then I'm more than willing to meet. Nobody has reacted.
And that's what I said.
Any capacity, any sort of feedback on any ordinance unless it's brought up here in a meeting. I'm starting the conversation, I'm starting this conversation every month when I bring up a copy of an ordinance and say, hey, everybody take a look at it, give back to me. Nobody gets back to me. I cannot have any, I'm, I'm not gonna waste my time having little secret meetings five minutes before committee meetings.
No, that's to have a secret meeting.
I'm about to give you a copy this year, let's tell you ahead of time.
You're the ones that have a secret meeting.
It's ridiculous.
You're the ones that have a secret meeting.
Absolutely ridiculous. This is an.
Who comes up with the ordinance?
The light ordinance actually came from the county.
That did, yes, that did.
Exactly, they come from the county and the state. Nobody makes them up.
Who came up with those ordinance?
I'm copying something and saying, ooh, that's a good idea. I'm not gonna get on the phone and say, ooh, everybody, guess what, I had a good idea. No, I'm gonna copy it and bring it to the committee meeting and say, hey, please, let's look at this.
Who comes up with the ordinance?
Nobody said anything afterward.
I know the one came from the county, alright, but the other ones we passed.
The economic revitalization.
Who came up with it?
The economic revitalization.
You're not having meetings.
On the state and the borough, nobody's making them up.
We're all elected.
We're not having meetings.
We're all elected.
Who's having meetings? I don't have. I don't have. Chair people of certain committees then, let's just get rid of them all then, okay? Let me apply or, like, you know, if something comes up, we're not supposed to discuss that at a committee meeting?
All, all of you.
All I know is that proper procedure was followed and has been followed since January third. It's a little ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say that, as far as procedure for adoption of the ordinance, under the borough code, section ten oh seven, I believe in the new borough code, which was adopted and effective yesterday, which I don't think controls such good, you know, I think.
So if you speak up your.
I'm sorry.
Can you speak up your.
Under the, under the borough code, Mr. Mayor, section ten oh seven, the only thing it requires is an ordinance to be published once in one newspaper, general circulation, not more than sixty days, nor less than seven days prior to pass. In all the instances here, that has been done. And I understand what Ms. Solly is saying because, I've looked at the minutes and I know that in committee meetings, she introduces an ordinance, and then you have a hearing or, and there's actually a meeting in between where you have, I think it's usually a council meeting, a committee meeting, and then you have a public hearing, and then there's a motion to adopt. That process usually takes about four to five weeks where the ordinance is available and the members of council have it. So I, I read your, your veto message because I was concerned about what you were saying. And to be honest with you, I didn't understand what you're talking about, when you said that no prior, no prior discussion on council members. There are committee meetings where the council members are here in front of the public and can raise whatever issues they want to raise, and the ordinance is publicly available for the, for the public to view here at the borough.
The last council.
On the website and for them to, and, and for them to come and ask questions, that's why this, the purpose of a public hearing is to give the audience the opportunity to ask anybody, offer any input that they might have into those ordinance. And my understanding is that those procedures, I mean, I don't go to your committee meetings, my understanding is that, that these ordinance are, they're available at the committee meeting for anybody on the council that asks any questions of the ordinance committee or the chair. I'm not sure what procedure it is you're talking about.
I'm just a little curious why it's a big deal for committee members of a committee to ask if they have meetings. I'm, I'm still, what's the big deal, what's the harm? What's the negative?
If somebody reached out to me and had an idea about any sort of ordinance and wanted to have a meeting, I would do so, like I did with Marion, when she contacted me last month and we had something late meeting, I'm more than willing to.
You just said she's not having a meeting.
It's only if that meeting's every month.
No, I'm talking about, if somebody, there's no point to have a secret meeting before a committee meeting.
It's not a secret meeting.
Whatever you wanna call it, there's no point to have a meeting with three people when you're getting ready to say the same thing five minutes later at the committee meeting. It makes no sense, it's a waste of time. I can easily call somebody, email somebody, say, here's a copy of.
Definitely not a half hour before the meeting, we did that because it was convenient for you, but generally it is another night. Now, Mr. Pescini, did you ask for a finance committee meeting?
Yeah, I wanted to ask that night, but I didn't set a date, but I did ask.
Isn't that a separate meeting?
Yeah.
With the three people on the committee?
Yeah, because I'll be, well, yeah, it could be a finance meeting.
So.
That's, I mean, I have meetings. The committee has meetings. They discuss things, you know, when, when the fire chief had a problem, he called me, we sit there, we spit all ideas around, and he, he would.
I start the conversation every time I bring a copy of a new ordinance and say, please, somebody, let's look at it, give back to me. Nobody gets back to me. It's not my fault that the other end of the conversation is not happening, I'm starting the conversation, that's all I can do. And at the end of the day, I was voted into this position to do good for the borough fall problem. This ordinance, after three months, as the one ordinance that's not a commission, if it can be appointed, is to get rid of, to help us handle abandoned properties. And you as the mayor should be not voting, vetoing or anybody voting no on something that's good for the borough just to make a statement. It's sickening to watch it on a national level, and now I'm disgusted to watch it happen on a local level. People did not vote you into these positions to make statements and vote no on something that's good for them.
Six months, I've been asking each one of you to talk. All seven of you are elected, not just four.
How much more talking do you want from me? I'm bringing up the ideas. I, I was told from previous council members and previous, before I was voted in or sworn in in January, that certain council members didn't even use to get copies of the ordinance that was voted on that night. I'm doing everything.
And I'm gonna pass the comment you're talking about.
Okay, okay, I'm doing everything.
He was never here.
Okay, well, that's neither here nor there, that was the case.
He chaired the committee.
I'm focusing on now and while I've been here, and I've done nothing but follow legal procedure, any other procedure. I really think, let's call a spade a spade here, right Jason? I really think certain people are having a little bit of ego issues since they're not the ones in control anymore and don't know what's going on ahead of time. That's really what's happening. It's absolutely ridiculous. It's an invalid argument, anybody who has a brain can see that.
Well, I can tell you, that's the thing, so you brought me up, for two years I sat in that. And I don't think we had seven.
I'm not calling anybody stupid.
Is that what you're saying?
That's not what came out of my mouth, now you're putting words in my mouth.
You're really.
It's what it sounded like.
Really.
Yeah. Somebody needs to do something here for fall problem, and I'm trying. I'm, I'm working, I'm fooling my mom, and I come to do this, and I put it in my heart, and people voted me in to do this, and I'm doing what I was voted in to do.
Can we bring the meeting back to order, please? I would like a motion to reconsider the anti-blite ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a roll call please?
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny. Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. McWhagan.
No.
Ms. Rafter.
No.
The anti-blite ordinance is done.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion to reconsider the environmental shade, environmental action and shade commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a roll call please?
Ms. Stravsky.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Ms. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. McWhagan.
No.
Ms. Rafter.
No.
Okay. The environmental action and shade tree, tree commission is failed, no over.
Just so the public is clear, I'm sorry, when she says it's failed, because when the mayor issues a veto of an ordinance, like you were required to have a majority of the you are required to have a majority of the council plus one in order to, what they call override the mayor's veto. And in this case, there were four votes to reconsider or to adopt, basically reconsider the ordinance after the mayor's veto. And there were three votes against. They're not having to...five votes in favor of reconsidering paying the reconsideration payments. Just want to make sure that the ordinance does not go into effect at this point.
If it needs to be brought back again now, you have to pay a whole another two hundred and fifty dollars to put in the paper again, correct? And that calls the borough's fall call after three-month process.
You can do...
The borough's fifteen thousand in unemployment.
When you fired two people last year. Let's talk about illegal products. How do you not pay the librarians the minimum wage for five years or not buy a ten ninety-nine for them? For God knows what part. Let's not stoop, lard, okay?
Yeah, I just have a question real quick, Mr. Solicitor Guy. Got a question real quick. Where can you find this, like, information? What website?
For what?
The ordinances.
You just keep talking about the website. Yeah, but every time you go on the website, it's just one page.
It's on fallcreek.net. I believe there's links on the front page.
Yeah, they don't work.
They do when I look on them.
Yeah, they don't work on me. That's why I was... I'm not trying to start anything.
No, no, I'm just telling you that when I look on them, they do.
I wasn't here the last two meetings. I just want to know what this ordinance is and the shade tree thing.
Can we move on to handicap parking applications?
Do you...where's the shade tree commission ordinance is still effective?
Yes.
It's just the...
Just the...
And making the... Crawling out.
Okay, thank you.
Handicap parking. Need a motion for handicap parking for Charles Morel.
Motion.
Second.
Do I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Robsky?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Ms. Voley?
Yes.
Mr. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Penny, would you like to take the shade tree commission ordinance?
Yeah, somebody to appoint Steve Robsky as the head of the shade...shade tree commission, only because he's into landscaping and he also does it as a full-time job.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Voley?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Ms. Voley?
Yes.
Mr. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there any other people you have to recognize?